Fifteen. Let's all, please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Greetings, everyone. We shall have roll call, please, Patty.
Councilmember Crails.
Yes.
Solvi.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Gulickson.
Yes.
Mayor Waller.
Yes. Well, it's time once again for Mayor Waller's quote for the day. This one actually comes from Mr. Albert Einstein, and he has a message of persistence for us today. It's not that I'm so smart, it's just that I stay with problems longer. Okay, we shall move on to the approval of the agenda. Before I ask for the motion to approve, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I will move approval of the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Citizens comments, this is a point in time in our meeting where we have an opportunity for the general public to come in approach the council. Now would be a time if I see, really, there's no one, it appears here, so we shall move on. We have a public hearing, and we have two representatives from St. Francis Health Services here. And Becca, would you want to introduce the gentleman on the screen? I'm not sure who it is.
This is Aaron. I'm sorry, I don't remember your last name. He is from Northland Securities, so he is doing their bond, correct?
Yes, he's the administrator of the bond, Aaron Manuel, this is his name. He's worked with us for several projects.
Okay, so we have a public hearing to approve the resolution approving the issuance of the healthcare facilities, refunding bonds from St. Francis Health Services. Would you care to come up and speak to the council a little bit, just to kind of refresh us on where we're at?
Sure, sure. So what we're looking at is the final construction, remodeling, renovation, if you will, of the last portion of the original building of Farmington Health Services. And you folks graciously were the issuer of the previous financing that was done in 2019, so it was a natural process for us to come back to you and ask to have the 2024 bond issuance, which is an amount of about eleven million dollars, or no more than eleven million dollars. And this project will replace the existing very, what's the word I want to say? Original construction, I should say. So it looks a lot different today to build a nursing home wing or to build a new section of your building than what it did in the past. And one of the major construction changes will be that all of the rooms will be private rooms, larger rooms, and then also they'll all have their own private bathrooms, which as we went through COVID, we certainly understand that and what we've tried to model out at Westman Village here in town as well. So, so those are the large, and then all of the HVAC for that entity. And then connecting walkways to both the Trinity Terrace, which is assisted living, fifty-four unit assisted living, and then a ten-unit memory care, so that those loved ones can go back and forth and visit within that area. So that's really the bulk of it. Any questions?
Sounds like a pretty large project.
Yeah, the campus will have ninety beds, skilled nursing facility beds. And you know, across the state of Minnesota, we've seen that our number of licensed skilled beds have been reduced because there's been a lot of other alternative options that have developed in assisted living, and we've been a part of that development as well. But in this particular entity, they are, at location, they are one of the only skilled nursing facilities within the area, and their occupancy has stayed very strong. And so we expect that with the right competitive-looking care center wing, that that will have admissions to that wing, and it will be sustainable into the future, so.
How far are you seeing your patients coming from? I know you're, you're located, how far south of the metro is Farmington?
Well, I guess if you're going from Minneapolis, it's about forty minutes.
Okay.
Thirty-five to forty minutes. And we get throughout that area, Lakeville, Farmington, some, I think, Apple Valley, Eagan, that area, but the bulk of it comes to us just from the Farmington proper area. We also own the nursing home in North Pitt, Minnesota called Three Lakes Health Services. So that's another thirty minutes or so south, farther south. And then we own Zambroda Care Center, which is also just north of Rochester in Zambroda, Minnesota. So we have kind of an area there, and we're trying to be the care provider of choice of that area.
Yeah, you're really in kind of a niche area right now.
Yeah, and it's a high-growth area, you probably realize too, so. Any other questions?
I maybe just have an aside question, and I'll turn it back over to them. But is there any plans for the Morris facility at all down the future?
We certainly have had plans here in Morris. As you know, we, or probably have heard, we did have a more term exception project approved. At the time, we were looking at seventy units or seventy beds there that would have replaced the original wings of that building as well. Their occupancy has declined again because of alternative, alternative assisted living types of entities in this location and around the area. And so we, we did not complete that project as a result of that. And today, they average between forty-five and I'd say fifty to mid-fifties is about the highest. So we're real thankful that we didn't complete that project at the seventy beds. And I already have some ideas and some drafts of what I'd like to see there, but we'd like to finish that project out to, or finish that building out so that it can be a stabilized skilled nursing facility for this community. We are not turning people away.
Right.
We'll take anyone that needs a bed and fits the criteria for services there, so. But yes, that's on, that's on our agenda, for sure.
Well, that's good to know, and you know, maybe down the road, you'll be coming back to us again.
I sure hope so.
That'd be the perfect world, right?
Yeah.
So these bonds, how, what's the term? You know, how much, what does payoff for these bonds? Maybe that's a question for Aaron.
Yeah, I'd be happy to speak to that, thank you. The bonds will have a thirty-year term, so there'll be serial bonds. How we structure a bond deal is that we've got bonds that mature and, you know, one, one in ten years, and then some fifteen, some twenty, some twenty-five, thirty. And we do that to kind of match the demand in the marketplace, the investors. And so some people like to buy short bonds, some people like to buy longer bonds. And these bonds, you know, just to, to state this clearly, that the city of Morris is in no way liable. The city would just be acting as a conduit pass-through to the five-one-C-three and lending their tax-exempt status, so it, it's really helpful to five-one-C-threes when cities like Morris help out. The bonds are secured by the mortgage. And in this case, we're doing what are called additional bonds. Because in nineteen, you know, we issued two morars, and so they can keep that debt in place. Lower interest rates by doing these additional bonds. And then they'll still be able to secure the roughly ten million dollars that they need to, to provide for these very needed renovations. So, you know, they're not refunding bonds, they're actually additional bonds for a new project.
And we intentionally structured the second bond term so that it would run a alliance with the original bond, so.
Right, I just, I thought it was important that you explain that it was a conduit in order for you to get the tax exempt for the passer through the city, and that we were not liable for this money. I think it's important that they, when we talk about these things, that the people out there know that we're not just on the line for an eleven-million-dollar bond in case something happens. So it's, thank you for putting that out there for us, Aaron.
And that data is also included in the resolution, as you know, so.
Right, right, right.
And our attorneys have looked over everything and find it.
They have.
Fine, so we'll have no issues with that. And all costs with the attorneys, anything with the city having expenses is being picked up by.
That's correct.
By the roar, so, thank you. Perfect.
Any further discussion from the council? If not, we'll entertain a motion on that resolution.
I will move on a resolution approving the issuance of a healthcare facilities refund bond, Series twenty-two-four for St. Francis Health Services.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second on the resolution approving the issuance of healthcare facilities refunding bonds, Series twenty-two-four for St. Francis Health Services. And I'll ask for a roll call on that, vote, roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Crails.
Yes.
Solvi.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Gulickson.
Yes.
Mayor Waller.
Yes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Yep.
You too.
Yep, you too. All right, we shall move on to reading an approval of the regular meeting minutes from March twelfth, twenty-twenty-four.
I'll move approval of the regular meeting minutes from March twelfth.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the March twelfth, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And now we have the condensed version of the same minutes from March twelfth, twenty-twenty-four.
I'll move approval of the condensed version of the minutes from three twelve twenty-four.
I'll second.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the condensed version of the meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will move on to the consent agenda, which consists tonight of the audit of city bills and the gambling reports.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Would there be any discussions on any of the items on that consent agenda?
Line forty-four, Morris Fire Relief, Fire State Aid, and Fire Aid, I assume that's potentially dues or something like that?
That comes yearly. Yep, so that's a normal amount, and then just depending they use some supplemental as well.
Yep.
Trended a couple thousand more than the year before, but it comes monthly.
Yep.
Yep, and then that gets passed on to the review.
It's insurance premiums collected by, if everyone's familiar with that, property protected in their district. It's a part of your insurance premium that's collected by the state and then back to the cities to go into their retirement fund. It's just a bit late this year. Normally, it's received like, I think, September, October, but some things with the audit that we're going through that we're just, I think, with the accounting firm in town. So finally, just getting it now.
Any other discussion in any of the other items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we have a first and a second already, so all those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, next up, under petitions, requests, and communications, we have our sustainability coordinator, Griffin Peck, among us, and he is gonna bring us up to speed on sustainability, the sustain, sustainability strategic plan. So, Brock Griffin, it is all yours.
Good evening. Thank you for seeing me today. And like I said, I'll be talking about the strategic plan update that we conducted at the end of last year for the Morris Model Strategic Plan. So just a quick agenda. We'll first review the first strategic plan and what happened between when it was completed and when we decided to do this update. We're gonna review what the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals are, the process for updating the plan, the finished plan, and what's next. But sort of suite. So Morris Model one point O, so this was created in twenty-eighteen after a planning retreat. That is one of the members of council. And it came up with these big three goals, to produce eighty percent of the energy we can, we consume from local renewables, to reduce our energy use by thirty percent, and to end land-going waste generated within the county. Along with these big, big three goals, there was this list of a hundred restoration projects, where we asked the people who were at the retreat to come up with, what are a hundred projects that you, like, just don't let your, you know, limits, don't play your mind like you, like, think about the biggest project, the most close projects. And so with that list of a hundred projects, Morris Model Partners completed thirty-four of them in five years and started additional sixteen. So in five years, we worked on half of the projects identified in that. And so thinking about a little bit, trying to characterize that progress. And so the UMN Morris campus became carbon neutral for their electricity consumption, which represents an emissions reduction of forty-six percent. It's really unheard of at university campuses, being able to do that sort of emissions reduction. They're also exploring energy storage. They have a lithium-ion phosphate battery that was installed last fall and is getting connected this spring. And then they're also studying opportunities for a large megawatt-scale flow battery that will be capable of powering the entire campus. And we've also worked with them to bring German interns from the University of Applied Sciences, Münster, to work with the university and the city of Morris on various projects. So a couple of years ago, we had Michael Abig, who completed a report on the performance of our water, new water treatment plant. And then last summer, we had Felix. And then this summer, we have a new intern coming in just a few weeks who will be working on heat pumps and thinking about heat pumps specifically for the community center, but around Morris. And the UMN Morris campus has also been doing some youth engagement. So over the last couple of years, they brought four hundred high schoolers from across west central Minnesota to the campus and to the community to learn more about our local sustainability work and learn more about sustainability and agriculture as well. The West Central Research and Outreach Center is working on combining solar with traditional agriculture, using fossil fuels across their agricultural industry, and then looking to do strategic electrification. So they have electric tractor, electric farm robot, they have a cowbot, they have these mobile solar PV shades that they're working on. And then their biggest one is this green hydrogen and ammonia Heartland Hub project. And so they've been very involved with the Department of Energy. And as many of you know, they'll be receiving, they have received a grant to upgrade their green hydrogen, green ammonia plant this summer to a one-time-per-day facility, which will be the largest penetration plant in the country. And then the city of Morris, right, we hired our sustainability coordinator position. We had installed a hundred fifty kilowatts of solar PV on public buildings. We are getting one of the, in the state of Minnesota, this year. We're also engaging in advanced energy benchmarking, thinking about our energies across our buildings. And then this position has also created a number of reports that have been shared, both regionally and statewide with greater Minnesota communities, about the work that's happening here and how it can be replicated in other communities. Also, had the Morris Area School District, they got some of the first electric school buses in rural Minnesota. They also installed solar on their bus garage for zero upfront cost. There was an article in the newspaper a couple of days ago about that. But essentially, between their solar on schools grant and the POP solar program, they were able to install that solar array for zero cost, and so it's already saving them money. And the Health and Climate Justice Summit, and started composting at the high school. And the county hired a solid waste coordinator and launched a kind of composting program, which is also pretty unique for a county against a community of large size. So why, why update this plan now, right? It's only five years. Why are we thinking of updating it? So part of it is wanting to align regional and state governments. And so last year, with the West Central Region, completed their own climate action plan. And then the year before that, the state also completed their own plan. And so trying to align some of our holes locally with those regional stakeholders, because those are where funding is gonna come through. Also speaking to funding, the Inflation Reduction Act, bipartisan infrastructure law, these are two really big pieces of federal legislation that have provided a lot of money, both through tax incentives, which we are able to get through a direct payout shit, and also through different grants and other programs. And then we also wanted to expand the Morris Model to capture sustainability beyond the traditional green top areas. So quick kind of turnaround of the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals are. They were created in two thousand and fifteen to complement the Paris Council. And their goal is to provide a framework for sustainable development for entities of all sizes, so ranging from countries all the way down to communities. And the goals were designed in a way to be applicable to all those different sizes of communities. And so I wanted to use the Sustainable Development Goals as a framework to think about sustainable development across several areas, including environmental, social, and economic. And just a little peek at this, so these are what the seventeen goals look like. And as many of you know, we didn't have seventeen titles, we had seven, and we wanted to pare them down. But just first, I think, some highlighting, our previous strategic plan really focused in on these three. Responsible consumption, quality education, and affordable and clean energy, transportation's also in there. In this new one, we're really addressing all seventeen of these areas. And so we're trying to think about all of the things that go into making a community sustainable. And one of the things that I was thinking about specifically was, you know, how can we make sure that our community is able to sustain for the next hundred years? How do we evolve, and how do we make it so that people are really attracted to come to Morris? And, you know, we are creating and thriving the community. So the process for updating the plan, I first engaged with our Morris Model partners. And so this started in twenty-twenty-two, and we started just brainstorming about maybe it's time for an update. We've done a lot of work, we want to maybe expand our ideas. And then we started engaging with Sabina Engel from the Climate Smart Municipalities Partnership, and Christoph Edder, who's the professor in Thrun FH Münster that we work with, to begin thinking about what we could do for an update. And then there was a link, West Central Initiative Resilient Communities Act came out, and this looked like a good funding source to be able to fund some of this work. So I applied for it, we were awarded it ten thousand dollars, hired planners and planned events and engagement around the strategic plan. And then with that, we were able to hire Vito Walruff, who's the community planner from our sister city of Sarback, to come to Morris to help me run the strategic plan update, and then also to write the plan after the, all the public events and stuff were done. So we had different levels of engagement. And so we had community-wide events, these were the large events that we held up over at hole number one, South Side. And these were focused on gathering ideas and feedback from a wider cross-section of the community. So the first event focused on gathering specific stakeholders to generate novel project ideas and goals. And that's where we had everyone sat down at different tables with different focused areas. And then the second event focused on gathering feedback from the wider community on the goals that were, goals and projects that were developed at the first event. And then we also had partner expert meetings. And so we met individually with the county, the city, the campus, the West Central Research and Outreach Center, and the West Central Minnesota Climate Network, to talk about organizational level goals and planning for the next five, ten years. And then also trying to think about, in these conversations that we have with all of these partners, are there possible synergies and collaborations that we can pull out and capitalize on? And so here's what two point O looks like. And so the first piece of it is this community projects piece. And so fifty-nine projects were conceptualized from those two public events. And those projects followed to these seven areas of sustainability based on the Sustainable Development Goals. We have strengthening local businesses and jobs, securing water and waste, improving city and community resilience, enabling equitable access to food, housing, and health services, expanding education, preserving our green and natural assets, and of course, ensuring clean and efficient energy use. And then these projects are meant to be taken, undertaken by either Morris Model Partners or community members in groups. So we wanted to create projects that were accessible to the community, regardless of whether they were a direct partner of the Morris Model or just a concerted community member. And I'm very happy to report that there are some movement on this. There's some people who are working with the RSDP to try and secure funding for food systems analysis for our community. So that's super great to see that progress is already happening on that. And then we have our partner local goals of projects. And so this was developed from our conversation that we had with our city folks. I believe it was Becca, and I think Kevin was there, and we had, we had Russ there, and we had our water plant staff there as well. Trying to think if there was anyone else there, I'm not a hundred percent sure. But from that conversation, we pulled up these goals and project ideas. So the goals are to reduce fleet energy use by thirty percent by twenty-thirty, reduce building energy use by thirty-five percent by twenty-thirty, install solar on all city buildings, reduce stormwater runoff, and increase green infrastructure resilience, increase active transportation, so that's things like biking, walking, and rolling, and then also increasing our community's resilience across a number of projects here. So I can just leave it up, come on, look at it for a second. But, you know, lots of great ideas. I think the biggest one, one I'm most excited about at least, is creating an islandable microgrid and resilient community hub in Morris. That would probably be this building, and maybe the city hall. And the goal would be to add a battery storage to this building so that in the event of a mass power outage, it could serve as a resilient community hub, right? So if it's the middle of winter, and we lose power across the city, and we have people in homes with baseboard heating and they don't have heat, where do they go? We don't really have the best answer right now. And so the goal would be to have more communities that they can come to. Or vice versa, in the summer, we're in the middle of the heat wave, we have a power outage, and now there's no place that has air conditioning. This could be a resilient location that could provide air conditioning even in the event of a mass power outage. So what's next, you might be thinking? So the current grant that I'm hired under is an LCCMR grant, that's Legislative Citizen Commission on Minnesota Resources. This position has had two of those grants so far, so we have one in twenty-nineteen and one in twenty-twenty-two. This grant ends on June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five. However, luckily, the Morris Model has already secured a hundred thousand dollars from the Energous World Communities Prize to continue supporting this position. And the team will compete for an additional two hundred thousand dollars this summer for continued support of this position. However, the position will need a work plan. And so my proposal is that the Morris Model Strategic Plan one point O and the updated two point O version, there's a work plan for a coordinator, and that adopting as a city will provide a clear work plan for continued sustainability progress. So if you guys like what we saw tonight, then Becca and I can work on the resolution to bring to you in the future. Thank you. Any questions?
Griffin, one of the goals you had there was to reduce vehicle miles traveled, the BMTs,
Yes.
within the city by forty percent.
Yes.
Is that just for the public at large, or is that just for our city?
That would be the public at large, because I mean, one of the things I think about when I see Morris, right, it's like, we're one mile long, and like, about a mile and a half wide. And so I think there's really a lot of opportunities to increase people who are walking and biking and doing, engaging in alternative forms of transportation. And so ideally, it would be for overall, right, the whole city. And so I think there's multiple ways to achieve that. But I try to leave the goals and projects as broad as possible to allow for, you know, these conversations to happen.
That's a pretty significant number, forty percent. Just under half, let's say.
Right, and I think, you know, there's some challenges with that, right? Because we have a lot of people who, like, live locally. Those are the people that would be more open to walking, but then also, obviously, we have people from out of town that are coming into town. So I think there's a lot of opportunities to think about how we approach that. But yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? General thoughts?
Yeah, I was, of course, Becca and I were both there, and I thought there was really some good conversations that came out of that, those meetings at Old Number One. I thought that was real beneficial.
Yeah, I think, you know, there are definitely folks that have noticed of what happened here and are wanting to replicate it in their communities.
And there's quite a bit of energy, you know, and that's, that's really the, where all, where it all starts. I mean, you can sit and talk all you want, but, you know, there are, there's a lot of energy, and people want to actually do things. That's, there's a difference there.
Right, yeah. One of the things I actually heard from our, from the event that I found really interesting, that I was maybe like a personal success more, was there were three public health officials at one of the tables, one from St. Francis, one from Horizon Public Health, and one from SCMC. They were all working on similar things. That was the first time they met. And so, you know, I, you know, I, well, I appreciate like all the sustainability projects that happened. Like, I also think there were connections made that, like, there are people working on jobs, or there are people working on housing that got to connect and talk, and maybe they hadn't connected before. And so even if there's not, like, a direct project in here, like, I really think that the process we engaged the community in was good. good and like, that's already having some really good impacts, so.
And those are the things you don't even take into account or consider when you're talking about, you know, but it's like, oh wow, yeah, so like you said, that was just like a
Right.
great reflection of putting that all together and the time and energy it took to, people connected.
Yeah, yeah, and I think it was, it was a really meaningful process to get to engage in, and it was cool to bring together that many people, I think, I look back at the first strategic plan, I think there were thirty-five people at that retreat, and in this process, we engaged over two hundred people, so I'm really proud of that for sure.
What kind of competitions will they be doing to get the additional funding?
So, we're, the Morris Model is already part of this, we already received this funding, this Energizing Global Communities Prize. Um, and this prize is uh no strings attached funding, which is really nice.
Yeah.
And essentially the prize is looking to recognize communities that have partnerships that work on clean energy. Um, I'm, I feel pretty confident that we'll, we are in the revenue for this two hundred thousand, primarily because most of the other communities that are in this prize program, they started their partnership this year. Our partnership has a lot stronger legs under it.
True.
And, you know, I think I had the opportunity to go to Colorado to a trading and meet the other prize competitors in January, and I, I don't wanna, I'm trying to think about how I want to say this, I think what we have in Morris is really unique. Um, the other communities that were there that had similar community partnerships were really interested in what we had and were like wanting to replicate it. And then there were other partnerships there that were more interesting partnerships. Um, like there was a lot of private businesses partnering with small communities, and it was the private business that was representative there. Um, but I think in terms of what the prize is asking for, and what we, the work we've done, and also the size of, we submitted eight projects under this prize application, and six of them have been completed, and so that's also another thing that can cause for, or a reason for me to think that we'll be successful is that on a lot of the products we've mentioned as wanting to do in our partnership are done now, and so we'll be able to show that in our, um, when we make the video for the final competition.
And to get the second prize, you had to qualify or earn that first hundred, correct?
Yes.
I mean, to go for the two hundred, you had to be one of the recipients of the hundred.
Yep, so there were sixty-four people that received a hundred thousand dollars, so we, I think initially to compete for the hundred thousand dollars, we were up against two hundred teams, and then for this two hundred thousand dollars, we'll be up against probably sixty-ish teams.
And how many of the two hundred thousand are being awarded?
Ten.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, just thank you for all your hard work, Griffin, I know you, you're very passionate about uh what you do, and uh we, on behalf of the council, I'd just like to say thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, I appreciate it. That's all I have for tonight, but if you guys like what you heard, then Becca and I can work on a resolution to bring to you to formally adopt this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we shall move on, uh we have a resolution, uh under ordinances and resolutions, uh it's for an application to the Minnesota DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant. So we have to accept that application. And I think, Becca, did you want to speak to that at all, if you can?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes, no, sorry, sorry about my coffee, I did take medicine before I came. Um, so we're only, I know I talked before about doing two different grant applications. Um, we're only gonna do the one, cause the other one, we don't feel we're very competitive with the trail. Um, and we did, you know, out looking, we have some money that we're thinking putting in the budget for next year, so we're just doing the, um, doing a grant application for uh the bathroom concession stand. Um, it can only be, I got some feedback back, so um it can only be used for bathrooms and not the concessions, so we're trying to figure out what cost the concession stand would be to take that out of there. Um, but in order to apply, you guys have to say that yes, you're willing, cause we'd have to put in fifty percent of the funds.
Which is a grant for?
Um, so, the first application that I did, it was about, I put about four hundred thousand dollars for the concession bathrooms. So, um, if we would have gotten that, it would have been two hundred thousand, so they give half.
Good.
So, um, it'll be less, the project costs will be less, we'll have to put in more because we can't put the concession stand in the grant.
Well, I think it's a very needed facility over at the ballpark over there, there's tremendous amount of use with all of our different youth programs, and people that are just using it as a park and as a the hub for all of our, our baseball with the boys and girls and youth and tournaments, the things that come to town, and I think it's, it's something that we do need to upgrade or do something with over there, and possibly looking into maybe to retro-use the bathroom concession into maybe just a concession if we can't incorporate that into a new bathroom, if we do get some funding to do that, so.
And you are actively working with Jeff on just budget, budget type of stuff?
Yep.
I think I saw that in your newsletter. What's the uh deadline?
April first.
Oh, coming right up.
Soon.
I just think any extra money we can get with something that's so well, is so needed, um, is worth it, cause now we know we're gonna need to do something with the concession stand, but at least if we could get half the bathroom, which is huge.
And these are very competitive, so hopefully we'll get it, but yeah.
And they'll be handicapped accessible and all that good stuff?
Yeah, that's, that's the main goal of the bathroom.
Yeah, that'll be, that's pretty important.
I will move on that resolution for application to the Minnesota DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for an application to the Minnesota DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant. And we'll have, roll call, vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Salvi?
Yes.
Crails?
Yes.
Gulikson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Wallers?
Yes. All right, next up, City Manager Newsletter.
Yeah. So, um, last week I went over, uh up to the Capitol for Legislative Day. Uh, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota, um, put that on for us, so um their three main goals are the bonding bill, they want to secure a bonding bill. Because that is where our PFA funds get funded from, um, so that's, it's a big portion of what their, their ask is. And then some business development infrastructure, some housing infrastructure dollars, and then Greater Minnesota childcare facilities. So those are what they, they have asked for the bonding bill to have in there. Um, supporting the EMS system, um, you guys passed a resolution, um, supporting um, supporting this bill. Um, they are looking for a hundred and twenty million dollars to help deficits of the EMS systems. Um, and the governor's last um budget that came out, he put ten million in, um, but it didn't go to any of our region, so there was only, I think there's like, can't remember how many they showed, seven to eleven different EMS areas, and only two um would get this ten million dollars. So, it's a start, but um, still looking for that support, so um, when I met with both the senator and representative, that was one thing um that came up is, is to push, push them to, to fund, it's a one-time fund money, and then trying to figure out what they're gonna do to um curb those deficits, um, for those EMS services.
I think they're gonna have to ratchet that up in a hurry, because it's, from what I'm hearing and talking to, I've talked to different people, it's getting to be a pretty serious situation.
Yeah.
I mean, where would we be with our, you know, emergency services?
Right.
Are these, are they like, is it private, or are these public EMS?
This is for all of the EMS services, but almost, almost half of the um EMS in Minnesota are city-owned. So this, this is where it becomes a city, city issue, cause most of it, private, I think, I wish I brought my sheet, was less than ten percent, I think it was less than five percent.
Isn't the, isn't our service here private?
Yeah.
So, will this funding help them at all?
Yeah.
It will?
Yeah, yeah, it would help, it would help all the services, cause what's happening is um the cost to, to do business and do care is going up, and then the Medicaid, Medicare has just stayed stable, so the, there's a big difference, and I believe when um, I went to the meeting a few months ago, when they came down to do it, the task force, um, a lot of them talked about if they go to a house or go on a run, and they don't take a patient back with them, they don't get paid. So they're sending people out, paying them, but not getting any reimbursement, so there's a lot of other areas of improvement, but a lot of it should happen at the federal level, but we've been waiting so long, and now the state's trying to figure out what they can do, so.
Becca, of the private ones, do you know of any that cost share with the city or counties? To help, I mean, offset some of their costs?
Not, I don't know, I don't know, I know the ones that have the hospital.
Where would the funding come from, the cities or the counties?
Comes from taxpayers.
Right, it would just come straight out of the taxpayers' money. So I don't know how you would partner with them.
The ones that are with the hospital are always just paid for by the hospital, so I don't, I don't know, I would guess the private ones, probably not, but I don't know, I haven't asked.
Yeah, I know, we've never been approached to participate in that, of course, with, you know, the fishers have done well, I think managing your business over the years, but as costs continue to go up, and it's, it's getting to be concerning. Okay.
Yeah. And then the last big thing they're really pushing is opposing this middle, missing middle housing bill. Um, which is basically um taking away local control on zoning, so I kinda said that the last time we were here. Um, biggest takeaway is that I got, um, they want to upzone single-family housing to allow eight residential units. Um, required limited, um, limit, it would limit parking requirements um to one parking space. So when I was in meeting with Senator Westrom, the city of Alexandria stated that they saw that in their city, they had in their ordinance, it was one and a half per unit, and someone came in and built this big apartment complex, and they had a lot of issues with their streets. People parking on the streets and, and different things, so that's a, that's an issue in the bill that they aren't um taking into account. It would permit multifamily lots on commercial lots, and impose uh minimum lot sizes of four thousand square feet for most residential types, and twelve, twelve hundred square feet for townhomes.
Of all the things you just mentioned, that commercial lot thing really is concerning for me, cause I think everybody sitting at this table knows how we struggle to try to find commercial land for development, and if we're gonna start allowing residential homes to be built in spots where we could try to attract businesses to come to our community, uh that is concerning to me.
It is concerning, um, as I had in a committee hearing on this bill, um, every single city organization groups, so the League of Minnesota Cities, Coalition of Greater Minnesota, I think they had a, two different twin city area groups in there, all have opposed this bill, and wanting them to change all the things that, or a lot of things that are in there. Um, because it, it takes away our control.
When they say multifamily, did they specify what type of multifamily, is it like apartment buildings?
That's what, that's what I was getting at, that's what I was understanding from this committee hearing. Um, cause they want to make it feasible for um, I think it was, how did they word it?
Would they be section eight housings developments?
You know, I don't, you know, they've never said that, they just said for, for people who are underhoused, um, if they want to live in cities like Edina, Eden Prairie, it was mainly city, they, they never talked, those um, for the bill, never talked about outstate Minnesota, it was just the big affluent cities they should be allowed to have apartments there.
Hmm, interesting.
So, I feel like that's where that's coming from. Um, so, we'll see how, how that goes and where that, where that ends up, but um, it's one to, to keep an eye on. Um, I met with both the representative and senator, um, talked a lot about both the, both the EMS, supporting the EMS and then opposing the middle, missing middle housing, so.
I'm sure Michelle will, you and I are meeting with Michelle on Thursday, we can maybe, she'll have some
Yeah.
probably some information on us, for us with that.
Maybe, yes, and you're coming too, Zach, with that?
I can, yeah.
Perfect.
That'll be good.
Yeah. Um, housing, Russ and I went and gathered some addresses for what we feel, um, our buildings, that our building inspector can look at. Um, a lot of them that um, that we noted are, are more garages than houses. Um, I did uh grab a few that felt were maybe a substandard, that maybe um, people who are looking for housing can maybe connect with the owners and see if they could, could make, you know, some offers there. Um, so, once they're in, they're in the diamond app system, I have a, I have a list on Excel, so I'll need to send them to the building inspector and then see what the next steps with the city attorney are. So, um, there's a few, there's one home that had a fire over on the west side of town. Um, that one, the building official did put up a, uh, that it's uninhabitable, and then we're just gonna try and see what our next steps steps are with that one. Already talked about the DNR outdoor grant. Um, I didn't get to spend the day in the classroom today with the weather, so next week, um, I'll be up at the high school talking to the civic students. And then we will be having our meeting there April twenty-third at ten thirty. Um, and then I was approached uh by the Humane Society about the feral cat issue, I, I sent, I sent in your packets, um, a letter from, from them. They are requesting some funding um to help, help with this problem. Um, they're talking to the county and the other cities around Stevens County to see what, what they can get for help, cause this has become a, a big problem. So I guess my, my next steps, maybe to have them come and, and share with you guys what, what the problem is, um, and what their thoughts are um for a budget request on what they need.
Who, who, who funds the Stevens Community Humane Society?
So the, the county puts in, I believe it's a thousand dollars, and then it's all donations.
Oh, that's all strictly donations?
Yeah.
They do a fundraiser or two, I think, throughout the year, and yeah, Kathleen Jules runs that, and Tracy Anderson are the two main persons. They do a lot of good things there, but yeah, they are uh in definite need. And you know, it can be a public health issue, the way I see it, I mean, if you get these feral cats using sandboxes as litter boxes, and then we have our children off their plan and that, it's not a good, not a good situation.
Yeah, and then I didn't know if you said the reminder, on Monday we have the Board of Review.
Yep.
It's not on here.
Said I think I am current on my, on my training.
Jeff.
And John.
So only current has to come?
I'll be there, and I'm sure you will be there.
Well, I think I'm, should be good, good.
Yep, you have to make sure we have a forum, otherwise we lose our control of that, I think, for three years, so.
You are correct, I just took that update. All right, any questions from the City Manager's Newsletter? Discussions, no? All right, we shall move on to the board updates, anybody that's uh on one of their respective boards? Anybody that's, uh, on one of the respective boards, if you have anything for the council, now is a good time. None? Okay, any other business to come before the council? Hearing none?